Okay, so just a quick reminder to everybody if you are at home, if you are watching at home and you would like to participate in public comment, please raise your hand and I will add you to the list. Steve Klug is the only one I have on there right now and he'll be going first. Agenda always calls for the Pledge of Allegiance first and then we go into public comment after that. So when I say raise your hand, of course, as you saw in the video, for those of you who didn't see the video, that doesn't mean literally hold your hand up to this camera. That means expand the participants panel in the bottom right hand corner of the participant panel, there'll be an option to raise your hand. So if you scroll to the bottom of your Zoom window, it'll expand the buttons and one of them will be the participants panel button. Click on that, it'll expand the participants panel. And then at the bottom right will be the ability to raise your hand. Hey Pete, we got you from the nose up.
Well, thanks Mike. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi Mary Jane.
Hi, how are you? Everybody.
One, two, three.
Good, good.
Do we have any known absences for tonight?
Yes, Chris Cosgrove is not going to be with us tonight.
There's David.
Walter's on too.
Yep. So we got four so far. Assuming Davis audio connects properly, it still says it's loading the audio. Dave, could you give me a wave if you can hear me?
David Lawson? I don't think so.
Got the top of her head.
He's various. He's speaking. Dave, are you, we can't hear you if you're talking to us.
Zoom says it's still loading your audio.
There, there it is. Hey Tammy. Hey Doug.
Hey Doug. There we go.
Yeah, all right, there we go.
And Doug, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep.
There's Mike. Hey home.
Okay, well, we have a quorum. So all right, last call for anyone since we are at six, I got 6:58. So this is going to be basically the last call for anyone who wants to participate in public comment. We need you to raise your hand now and I'll add you to the list. When we, again, when we say raise your hand, that doesn't mean literally hold your hand up to the camera. That means we need, we need to click raise hand. It's the rate, that button is at the bottom right corner of the participants panel. You can expand the by clicking on the participants button at the bottom of the Zoom window. If you are calling in to raise your hand, remember that is star nine. And if you're calling in, remember too, that star six mutes and unmutes yourself. I'll send an invitation out to everyone who needs to be unmuted. So I'm not sure how to work on my phone, but that's the last call. Katie, you got your hand raised? What's up?
I'd like to say something during public comment.
Awesome, okay. So Pete, right now I have two for public comments. Steve Klug is first and then Katie is second. Where's Randy?
All right, so we're now at seven o'clock and as Mike said, we have the two individuals for comment. Before we do that, let's all stand for the pledge. Mary Jane, could you lead us to the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
America.
Some nation. Indivisible.
We have a moment of silence for the men and women in the armed forces and our first responders. Thank you.
Public comment Pete?
Yes, sir.
All right, first up is Steve Klug sending you invitation unmute now.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Steve Kluge and I'm one of the new Milford delegates to the Candlewood Lake Authority. On behalf of the CLA, on behalf of everyone who in any way benefits from all the wonderful things Candlewood Lake has to offer. I'd like to publicly thank the mayor and council for entertaining and supporting our request for the funding of two new patrol boats. Two of our boats were taken out of service as a result of a particularly busy summer on the lake. We appreciate the timely efforts you all made to support our request outside of the normal budget cycle and would like to note that you were the first of the five towns on the lake to make that commitment. Shortly after our meeting with you and before we had approval from all the other towns, First Light came forward with an offer of $100,000 toward the purchase of one boat. Thank you First Light. And the CLA decided to provide an additional 50,000 from our capital reserve fund to purchase a boat right away. That boat has been ordered and we are expecting delivery of CLA's first purpose-built patrol boat before the start of the 2021 recreational season. With that in mind, we are officially withdrawing our request for the out-of-budget cycle funding for the purchase of new, of two new patrol boats. We'll be including funding for a second boat in our 2021 budget. So once again, thank you Milford and thank you First Light for supporting the Lake Authority and our mission on the lake.
Steve, can I just get your, your mail address?
Sure, it's 63 Lake Drive, New Milford.
Thank you.
Thanks Steve.
Thanks.
Yeah, well, thank you guys very much. It was, it's, it's really been great support that we received from you, you guys. Really good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I'm set, I'm done.
Thanks Steve. Katie?
Yes, thanks Mayor. I just wanted to say in public comments, so that doesn't get lost in all the other things we do. Today, we, the United Way, Western Connecticut and the Greater New Milford Women's Club worked to hand out 275 Thanksgiving meals, but what I wanted to say was thank you very much to the Knights, Knights of Columbus, now known as the Knights. I guess it's chapter 40 here in town. We had four, five of the Knights came, once again, to help direct traffic around the Pettibone Building. We didn't have any, any problems with people driving up and driving away. And this is about the third time this year that they've helped with a fundraiser that I was doing and I can't thank them enough for their willingness to come and stand in the, the wind, the rain, whatever it is. So thank you so much. That was Walter Coffey and several other guys. And I also want to just remind everyone that the Reeds Across America ceremony, which happens every year, this year it's December 19th, is a Saturday. I on behalf of the Daughters of the American Revolution, Roger Sherman Chapter, do it at the St. Francis on Fort Hill. This is an outdoor ceremony. Obviously, everyone stands a good distance apart and everyone will be asked to wear a mask, but we will recognize all branches of the service, servicemen and women who are serving now and those who are gone. So I welcome anybody who would like to join. There's also a ceremony at Center Cemetery. I'm not sure. I mean, that's a lot bigger ceremony. I'm not sure what they're going to do about the numbers of people, but again, there's a lot of space. So just remember it's Reeds Across America and we want to honor all our servicemen and our veterans. So that's it. Thank you.
Katie, Katie, what's your address?
One, two, three Candlewood Mountain Road, New Milford, Connecticut. Greatest town in all, all the world.
Amen.
And is that the end of public comment, Mike?
That's it.
I have, I'd like to now go back to business, suspend the rules to add items to our agenda under the consent agenda. I'd like to add item 3G, which will be a donation for Parks and Rec and item 3H, another several donations for one of their accounts.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? All is in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Okay, so moving in, item three consent agenda. I move that the council accept and approve items 3A through F. I think you all have that on your agenda. That's the prior minutes, the tax collector balance, senior center to a donation of two bookcases. Parks and Rec received a donation of a Christmas tree donated by Mr. And Mrs. Christopher Prowse. And they would like very much to the Parks and Rec to thank the family for that lovely donation. Youth Agency, item 3E is that they are receiving additional revenue from the Waterbury Youth Services in the amount of $11,375. It's to reimburse case management services through the General Review Board. Their funds will be going into account 1044190043305. The item 3F is just the sustainability fund that we had the fourth distribution approved for $500 for a COVID-related volunteer disbursement. So item 3G, which is that the Parks and Recs Commission requests the, asks to accept $150 from the Savings Bank of Danbury. And this donation be put into account for further appropriation into account 104505005308. And that is Parks and Recreation Program specific, that account. That was $150 from Savings Bank of Danbury. And then item 3H was from Parks and Rec to ask that the following donations be put into the revenue account 3351000048400, which is the Parks and Recreation Gift Fund. And those items that are under this are $200 from Kramer and Anderson for garlands, lights and bows for holiday decorations. $100 from Jeron Nursing and Respite for garlands, lights and bows and lamp posts in town. $100 for Arthea of Antarctica, again, for the downtown decorations. $100 from Bakewell and Mullhair for said decoration. $25 from Joe's Salon for the 25 from Grable Business Services, again, downtown decorations. And the Parks and Rec Commission would like to thank the above donors for their generosity.
Second. Do we have a first and a second? Do we have any discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions?
I have to abstain on the minutes. I can't because I wasn't here last time. But the rest of it's good.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, item four, we have an update from Dr. Levin tonight.
Dr. Levin?
Yes, we do. There he is.
And Mike, can you unmute Dr. Levin, please?
Dr. Levin, you should be unmuted.
Good evening, council. Two pieces of information for you and one that's evolving. I think we still feel pretty good. The vaccines that have been, I unrolled in the last couple of weeks. Very high probability of success, better than 90% in a couple of them and the third one looks like it's coming close. Those all mean that we're better than the flu vaccine, which is 40 to 60%. And from the perspective of the town, that's good news because as they roll out, we'll have a high certainty of covering ourselves and getting a degree of herd immunity, even if you get to about 70% of people in town. If we don't get 100%, it's looking, it's going to be very good. Other piece of information, which I think is very encouraging, as we all know, three weeks on the election night, we have something south of 191,000 infections today. We've, three weeks later, we've got 141,000 around the nation. And we ourselves are suffering that same kind of increment in New Milford. The, I think we have a, because of the council and because of the way we're treating this, I think we have a better chance of controlling it. Unfortunately, the aggression around the country is not as optimistic, but today we had a good development, which is the transition handover is proceeding. That's essential because manufacturing can't stop. So I think we, with that transition laid in ground now, we, it looks like we'll be able to hand over quickly and there won't be too much of a stop or any kind of hesitation in handling a manufacturing. I brought up three weeks because it is pertinent, the 91 to 141,000 is a lot. And we could easily see that double in the next three weeks unless we really get a handle on this. So, but nevertheless, two good, good vaccines, good, good handling process now looks like. And then I shared with the mayor, which please feel free to share. The actual, who will get the vaccine when it comes in? That's, that, that, that's coming into clearer view now. The, I will attend the CDC meeting. It will be determined by the CDC, the process will be number one, an emergency approval. That's probably upcoming fairly shortly. That's for the Pfizer vaccine. Followed very shortly thereafter by the Moderna vaccine. Then the CDC, who has already purchased tens of millions of doses, has a job to do. It's, it will be in the public eye. People like myself will be asking for specific modifications of the plan or changes to the plan. It's a pretty good plan right now. Mr. Mayor, if you feel free, that the preliminary plan is in place. It's basically boiled down into four groups. The first group being the healthcare professionals, the second being essential workers, the third being adults with high-risk medical conditions and the last being the adults over the age of 65. So we pretty much see the, some degree of visibility in that. And certainly the town's essential workers will be way up there, upfront in the, the first group. So I'll stop and take questions, but just three points. Good vaccines, good handover. Now we're getting visibility on the plan. And I will say I will be at the CDC once the emergency approval has happened. And I'll relay back to the council the minute I understand exactly what modifications to this four-step plan is being looked at.
Any questions for Dr. Levin? Doug?
Dr. Levin, thank you for joining us tonight. Just have a quick question. Do you have a timetable for the rollout? Is it going to be sometime in the, say, April timeframe?
No, it'll be before that, by the look of this, assuming, assuming that the first doses, there's approval, rapid approval, and then the first doses there, as I said, 40, 50 million doses, they, they're going to try and get the bulk of those out before the end of the year. That does depend on this transition. That's why that three weeks is pretty important. The, it's my guessing that within the first quarter, we'll have a substantial rollout across the country, but that will be probably to groups one and two, which is healthcare professionals, personnel and essential workers. That covers about 100 million people. And there are, who's the rest of us will, will start to get it. So that's, my guess is by the end of the first quarter, we'll start to see people coming in the April period, something like that in this, in this region, but that's, that's yes, at the moment.
Any other questions for Dr. Levin?
Oh, just a clarification. People over the age of 65 will not see this thing until your guess, March, April timeframe?
Yeah, well, that's you and me both. The fourth group is currently configured. The, the way it works is that they're broken down into four different groups. The first, they say, it includes long-term care facilities, outpatients, home healthcare, pharmacies, EMS and public health. The next group, which is right behind that, is food and agriculture, food services, transportation, education, energy, police, firefighters, manufacturing, IT and communication, water and wastewater. The, then you get to those who are ill and that includes people with obesity. Doesn't matter the age group. Severe obesity doesn't matter the age group, diabetes, obstructive pulmonary disease, heart conditions, chronic kidneys, cancer, smoking, solid organ transplant, and then the sickle cell disease. And then the healthy people at the end, who are essentially over the age of 65. These are the community dwellings. They, they will be those who are doing skilled nursing, facilities, assisted living facilities, residential care, HUD, senior housing, all of that, that represents about a 53 million person community. Those four groups are the groups that they're describing as, as of now. I will be, as I said, I'll be at the CDC meeting, which is a public meeting. And I'll get more clarity and we'll come back with an understanding, but it's, those are the four priority groups who will be getting it rolled out. First of all, 21 million in the first group. About 87 in the second, 100 million in the next, and then about 53 in the last one, which is the 65 olds and above. And all of that should come in the timing I described by April, remember.
Just one more quick question, Pete. Dr. Levin, is this a two-part vaccine?
Oh, you quite right, yes. The, the Moderna and Pfizer are both two-part vaccines.
What's the timeframe on those?
I believe it's six weeks between. Nope, I'm hearing a correction. One second.
Sure.
One is three weeks and the other one is, the other one's four weeks. You know, this is what the good thing about living in a family, you get the information. You tell them, you get it back to you and you get it.
So just to be clear, then it's a two-part vaccine where obviously one you take and then you're saying about three-week period, then you take the second shot per se.
That's correct. And in the case of the AstraZeneca one, which it's not clear, there are three right now. The one that's just been announced today in, and yesterday in Great Britain, it's unlikely that that's going to come in near term. If, that's the one that says between 70 and 90%, that's a different kind of vaccine. That, they're still trying to determine exactly why you get a better response when you give a low dose to begin with and a high dose subsequently. We kind of shouldn't worry and think about that too much because we've got two good vaccines here, which were manufactured in, one of them in Connecticut, by the way, by Pfizer, and the other one is Moderna. Those two vaccines are two injections, similar doses. And those will be the first approved in the United States. And those are the ones that'll cover us in the next six to seven months is my guessing.
I just got one more question, I'm sorry. Because, so once you get the first shot, Dr. Levin, can you get, can you still get the virus? Or does that prevent you from getting the virus between the first and second shot?
Yeah. Yep, there's no evidence that, until you've got full resistance, there's no evidence that the one shot will necessarily stop you getting the virus. The only evidence that we have suggests something is happening is that in the trial that they showed in Great Britain, which was really interesting, it's the same, it's the same thing that your body's reacting to in both places. Putting this little red spike protein into your body. It's just different ways of getting it in. And that spike causes you to have antibodies. But what is super interesting in these two doses in the UK is they showed that the number of hospitalizations and serious infection went down dramatically simply by having one injection. So that's kind of, that's encouraging because maybe you can just knock the sucker back with the first injection and then get a good immune response with the second one.
So it sounds like it would slow down the infection. Okay.
Yeah, that's what, that's sure, that's exactly what it's telling me. But we have the data, we have to see the clear data. I mean, it's, there's a lot of newspaper speculation about this and I would prefer, quite honestly, if they just published this whole lot in a peer-reviewed magazine, that we could actually see it. Data, the raw data, then, then we could make some real highly educated guesses.
Yeah, Dr. Levin, what is the plan for children? This, is this vaccine not going to be appropriate for children?
Wow, Mary Jane, spot-on question, spot-on question. So the question is, who, what age groups have they used? They haven't yet gone below 12 years old. So they need to demonstrate categorically that it's safe before they go to these young kids. And that's going to be, I mean, Mary Jane, you, you put your finger exactly on one of the two things. School, ensuring that the kids aren't hurt by the vaccine because that would be a catastrophe. I don't have good data on that at all. I looked for it myself the other day because we all know getting the kids back into school is critical. However, the, the, the good news about this is the kids seem to be far less affected than their teachers. And so if you can protect the teachers, maybe we'll start here. I don't have good information for you on that. But I will, I will go and interrogate all three companies and ask them what their thinking is.
Okay, that would be great to know. Thank you.
Mike?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Levin, Michael Gold. Thanks very much for the update. What's the best course of action as an employer to encourage our employees to check with their primary care physician? Or, I mean, how does that actually work to encourage people to get the vaccine?
So Mike, you know, this is such a good question because you and I both know, neither you nor me nor anybody around this table actually got any centralized information about the value of these and what employers should do, right? And I think the answer is, unfortunately, we're going to have to do a little bit of this work ourselves. So the number one item is that we need to be able to publish and make sure everybody knows the safety and efficacy of these medicines or these vaccines. And that, I think we should all, if I can encourage every employer to lay out for their employees what they know about these vaccines. And I'm happy to provide that to the council, the best sources that I have, which is, by the way, the same, it's exactly what I tell my employees. It's exactly what I do. I lay it out exactly what I hear from Pfizer, what I hear from Moderna. And I'm looking to the critical publication of this data. That's number one. Number two, provide them that information. I think they have to assume that while physicians are interested, it's possible the physicians won't actually know this, not because they don't want to. They don't necessarily have the same level of information, that's all. And they'll be getting it from 100 different places. So I would extend that I can provide you the information, I will do. I recommend that we, I know one thing that's about to happen. And this will roll it out in the next couple of weeks. We're about to create a, not create, it is a central repository of information on this, on the vaccines, their effectiveness. Vaccines, their effectiveness, a definition in English. Let's let me use the word Michael English because. Damn, you get so much of the scientific language, you don't know what's going on. But it we a website that I have sponsored at with Pfizer. AstraZeneca and Moderno at the organization, the biotech organization in Washington DC. It will roll out in a couple of weeks, and it's going to be, we I believe, the central source of information. It's the same information I'm giving you now. Except it's much more condensed. So the minute we roll that out, it's it's going through some uh some uh. Uh some not revision, some polishing. I'll make sure that you and the mayor have that, and you can feel free to distribute it to everybody. That will have exactly the information you need, and it will be updated consistently and in a in a way that. Uh I I at least I can understand, and I guarantee you will understand.
Thank you, doctor.
Any other questions for Dr. Levin? Thank you, Dr. Levin. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Okay, uh moving on, item five, uh tax assessor, make a motion to authorize Mayor Bass to execute. A tax abatement and deferral agreements approved by the town council on September twenty eighth, twenty twenty. Pursuant to code of New Milford section nineteen dash forty four. Et sec relating to the following taxpayers and properties. First is property at two fifty four Danbury Road owned by K and L Asian Corp., which is Yokohama Restaurant. And item B, which is property at two ninety one Danbury Road owned by Z and Z Real Estate LLC. Which we know is this Sonic Sunoco Gas Station Convenience Store.
These were approved last council meeting. We have a second, any discussion?
Who's who's second in that?
Walter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Mayor's remarks.
Thank you, Katie. Um and uh just quick updates on the numbers that we have as of today. And these are confirmed cases since March, so this is in no way uh COVID uh confirmed cases that are currently active. So in the state of Connecticut, we have ninety nine thousand three hundred and thirteen. Litchfield County, we have three thousand five hundred and fifty eight. That's up two hundred and forty from Friday. Hospitalizations are sixteen, which is up one from Friday, and those hospitalizations are for the entire county. New Milford is at five ninety six, which is up seven from Friday. And again, uh as uh uh most of the news media, Dr. Levin has stated it, and we've all stated it, we just want to affirm and make sure it's admitted. Um if you're an elderly person or a person with an underlying condition, which example is diabetes, pulmonary or heart conditions. Please only go out if you have to right now with this uptick of confirmed cases. Also, if you're exhibiting any symptoms of COVID nineteen, please do not go to work and do not send your child to school. If your symptoms continue, please consult your primary physician and get tested. Please continue to wear your mask, practice hand hygiene, which is twenty seconds under as hot a spigot as your hands can take. Underneath your nails, up to your wrists, or if you're not around a spigot, please use hand sanitizer. Please keep your social distance of six feet or greater, and please check on your elderly family and friends. Uh Governor Lamont's travel advisory was updated. The following list of states and territories are as follows. Alabama, Alaska, Arizona, Arkansas, California, Colorado, Delaware. Florida, Georgia, the territory of Guam, Idaho, Illinois, Indiana, Iowa, Kansas, Kentucky. Louisiana, Maine, Maryland, Massachusetts, Michigan, Minnesota, Mississippi, Missouri, Montana, Nebraska, Nevada. New Hampshire, New Mexico, North Carolina. North Dakota, Ohio, Oklahoma, Oregon, Pennsylvania, Puerto Rico, South Carolina, South Dakota, Tennessee, Texas, Utah. Vermont, Virginia, Washington, West Virginia, Wisconsin, and Wyoming. And we're asking, uh as the governor had stated, anyone that is traveling to those areas. When you come back, you're going to have to quarantine for fourteen days. If you have any family members or friends or business associates that are coming into the state of Connecticut from these areas. We're asking for them to quarantine or have a test done seventy two hours prior to coming into the state. This is all in trying to keep uh the numbers as low as they can possibly be during this time of an uptick. And to keep all of our residents safe. Uh according to uh the conference call that I was on, uh they're looking for uh the uptick. To reach its peak in the middle to end of January. So we all can be uh cognizant of that. And continue to wear our masks, as we said before, hand hygiene and six feet social distance. Also, uh in the conference call that I was on, they talked about Thanksgiving and the fact that. Really, the main spread so far statewide that has caused the spread, the majority of it, has been social gatherings. Especially in the homes of either friends to friends or family to family. People tend to take their masks off, tend to feel a little more relaxed, and when that happens, you have uh an instant, an instance of. Uh additional spread of this virus. Um that uh the consultants that were on the conference call again stressed, if you if you can, please. Limit your interactions during this holiday season. The more that we can do that, the better that it is when we're going through these uptick in numbers. Concerning testing, I spoke with uh Mike Cressman, our health director. We're gonna be partnering with the V and A. Within the next week or so to have our testing. The first testing will be a petty bone. We're gonna be uh uh pushing out that information. I also have been working with the state of Connecticut to have three to four more testings done. They'll mo- they'll mainly be towards the school uh teachers and to children. Everyone will still be available to come to these as well. But the main portion will be, as the superintendent has asked, the ability for. Our parents and our children, when they come back from Thanksgiving break, to be able to take a test. And I have more information when we are. Able to finalize those uh dates, the state of Connecticut. I'd also like to thank, as Katie said before, the United Way, the Women's Club of New Milford. Um the Social Services Senior Center, Knights of Columbus Volunteers, all those who donated for Operation Thanksgiving. As Katie said, it helped over two hundred and seventy five families and seniors in need this Thanksgiving. So we can't thank them enough for helping our community. We also like to thank uh the park and rec team for putting up the Christmas lights that you see on the light poles. And also putting up the tree that, as we talked about before, it was so graciously given to the town as it is each and every year. We like to also congratulate the New Milford Girl Soccer Team. Their two nothing win over Newtown and becoming SWC North Champions. So congratulations to the ladies, the coaches and the staff and the parents. Congratulations to the New Milford High School varsity field hockey team as they became the SWC North Champions. Again, congratulations to the ladies, Coach Hugh, and the coaching staff and parents. I'm also uh would like to uh connotate and the Milford Police Department thanking Chief Serudo. We uh have our motorcycles that we uh had able to purchase. The two, they're now out, and they're doing traffic enforcement. And also they're doing distracted driving. So I was able to take a look at those two motorcycle, great uh looking bikes and uh great for the officers. Uh to be out and about in a new uh more uh effective way of really uh hitting those that are speeding in different areas and also doing distracted driving. So thank you to Chief Serudo, and uh thank you to the men and women of the Milford Police Department. Also, thank you to the United Methodist Men's Church Group as they put the trees up that will be lit. Um as it always is for uh for our holiday, Christmas uh celebration, and thank you to them. And speaking of that, the chamber will be having. Uh a virtual event. Normally, uh we have a lot of people coming down, but we're asking those to watch it live on Facebook as we. Go ahead this coming Saturday uh to light uh the trees on the green as we always do. But we're asking those uh to please uh watch this virtually rather than coming down because we want to make sure that we uh. Uh don't have a lot of uh large gatherings, especially during this time with the increased uh uptick in uh COVID cases. Um as far as our road work, uh we've completed our third year in the road program. And the following roads that have been completed are McNulty, Polaris, Warwick, Daly, Short. Forest, Gretel, Miss Hill, Eagle, Carman Hill one and two, Grandview, Wampum, Indian Ridge. Arrowhead, Long Mountain, Elm Street Extension, a Geiger Road, Orchard Heights. Uh we're still in the midst of just about completing Heacock Crossbrook. Uh we're doing some driveway aprons. Uh the rain for the last week has kind of pushed us back a little bit on that. Um Brettwood and Cobler, uh we completed the drainage repair on the one side, and we're continuing to work on that road uh as well. Uh that would be all included. We've done about twenty eight miles of road this year. So thank you to our DPW team, our contractors, uh and everyone involved in uh really uh being able to get that much road work done. Uh beginning in April will be our year four, and the roads already on the docket for the beginning of April will be Burnham. Dorset, Popular, Brentwood, Bobler Lane, completing that, Charter House and West Street. And as soon as uh the uh Roads Committee, along with our DPW team. Uh continue with more roads to be put on there, I'll be updating the council as well. Uh also, we're having a drive uh with called Ultimate uh New Milford. I'm sure Karen is gonna be talking a little bit about that uh when she's giving her report for economic development. That's a uh kind of a fun uh event uh that we're doing with our uh New Milford downtown and outside of the downtown, our full business. Businesses here in New Milford to help create uh additional business and retain business here in New Milford. So that's all I have, Katie.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh item number seven, um this is, we're gonna hear from our grants and compliance specialist, Tammy Reardon. Regarding uh the high school roof replacement and Sarah Noble oil tank replacement.
Tammy?
Tammy?
Okay, thank you, everybody. Um so you have in front of you three resolutions. They are duplicate resolutions, but they are for two separate projects. The first set of three resolutions is for the New Milford High School Roof Replacement. These resolutions are required by the Department of Administrative Services for us to be able to submit. A grant reimbursement package for that project after it is complete. As I have included on the notes um for this agenda request, the reimbursement rate for the town of New Milford is forty three point nine three percent. Um the construction cost that was approved by the Municipal Building Committee as well as funding. By a special town meeting in May of two thousand and nineteen. Construction costs are just over four point two million dollars, and that's for a standing seam roof option with a fifty year lifespan.
Do we have someone that would like to make that motion?
Yeah, I didn't know if Tammy was finished.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, those.
Okay, yes, I see. Right.
Right, the high school roof replacement, um each of those three resolutions, you can do them as a single motion. As long as each of the three are recorded in the minutes.
Right, correct. So I'm going to make the motion that the council. Approve the following three resolutions with regard to the New Milford High School Roof Replacement. And that will be resolved that the New Milford Town Council authorizes the superintendent to apply to the Commissioner of Administrative Services for the Roof Replacement Project at New Milford High School. Two, resolve that the New Milford Town Council authorizes the Municipal Building Committee to serve as the building committee. For the roof project at the New Milford High School. And three, resolve that the New Milford Town Council will authorize. At least the preparation of plans and specifications for the roof project at the New Milford High School.
Second.
Thank you, Walter. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
And item seven B, as Tammy said, this is the uh the same three motions, but this is with regard to the Sarah Noble Intermediate School Oil Tank Replacement. Tammy, did you want to speak anything about that?
Um so that final cost is is yet to be determined by the Municipal Building Committee. They're moving along. Um I took the liberty of putting these on your agenda at the same time because they are duplicate resolutions. They are required. The Department of Administrative Services did not have an oil tank on file that was younger than twenty years old for that location. So the oil tank replacement does qualify for the full forty three point nine three percent reimbursement once we do that project. There are other uh documents, of course, that I will be required to provide the Department of Administrative Services. Most of which will come through the Board of Education. Um so there is more information to follow. But I just figured I would get these out of the way so that we can move rather quickly. The goal for both of these projects. Is to put them out to bid over the winter months so that we have the advantage of catching contractors early in the spring. With good bid prices for um spring and summer construction.
We hope to. Thank you, Tammy. So uh I will move that the town council approve the following three resolutions that pertain to the Sarah Noble Intermediate School Oil Tank Replacement. One, resolve the Milford Town Council authorizes the superintendent to apply to the Commissioner of Administration Services for the Oil Tank Replacement at Sarah Noble Intermediate School. Two, resolve that the New Milford Town Council authorizes the Municipal Building Committee to serve as the building committee. For the oil tank replacement project at Sarah Noble Intermediate School. And three, resolve that the town, the Milford Town Council authorizes at least. The preparation of plans and specifications for the oil tank replacement project at Sarah Noble Intermediate School.
Second.
Can we have a second, by Walter? Any other discussion on the motion?
Yes, please.
Dave?
Yeah, Tammy, um could you give a ballpark figure? I've had quite an experience with oil tank replacements, so. Do we have any idea?
We're figuring, Dave, I can answer that right now. We're figuring, we're figuring anywhere from between one thirty and one fifty.
And that's that's depending on the tank that we're gonna use. Oh, I'm fully aware of how that works.
And uh right now, that's kind of the rough estimate that we're getting. Uh we're gonna finalize that more uh once they decide on the tank they're gonna use.
Yeah, and the only other thing I'd add is I think we're very prudent to do this now because supplies are in, well. The supply chain and manufacturing, and I know the tanks have to be manufactured. Uh so the quicker we get that in in sometime, yeah. Okay, great. Thanks for, thanks for that.
Yes, sir. Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Great.
Thank you. I certainly appreciate that. If I may take a moment of your time, I'm just gonna give you a great point of interest. This is information that I learned this afternoon, um and I'm very happy to share with you. So with the COVID response that the town has been responsible for doing, we have incurred. Just well over a hundred thousand dollars or more in expenses to protect the residents and our employees. Through a variety of things to facilitate the um electronic world, if you will, for Zoom meetings and proper. Touchless protocols as much as possible. So in October, I submitted a coronavirus relief fund reimbursement. To the State of Connecticut OPM, and that was hopefully for a hundred percent reimbursement of the expenses the town incurred. From March first through the end of June. So basically, from the start of the pandemic in March. When we had to react to it through the end of our fiscal year, I submitted seventy two thousand five hundred eight ninety. Five hundred eight dollars and ninety three cents worth of what I deem to be eligible expenses for reimbursement by OPM. We got the news today, just this afternoon, that all but seventeen dollars and five cents of that was eligible for reimbursement. So. I'm very happy to report that to you. It was a very tedious task. Um but I'm very proud to be able to provide that work on behalf of the town and the residents of New Milford to get as much money back as possible. There are additional reimbursements that may be going in for expenses incurred from July first on. However, OPM may be. Readjusting their program because they do have to disperse those funds prior to the end of December of this year. So they may be switching over to an allotment basis um for each town. So they may be switching over to an allotment basis, um, for each town based on the residential count. So I'm sitting on hold, waiting to submit a second reimbursement and hoping for the same success.
That's, Tammy, that's great.
Thank you.
Really good.
Yeah, quick question for Tammy. Quick question, Tammy, and, uh, I'll be the guy to ask it. What, what seventeen dollars and fifty-five cents?
It was a, a very minimal expense, um, put forward by our Economic Development Director. She had other expenses that were directly related to her position. This was a minimal expense for support of local business. And it was, it was something just, it was obviously very trivial. But I figured, hey, let's put it in, so, you know. Seventeen bucks, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I'd like to return the seventy, yeah. Well, thank you very much for doing that, that's great news.
Great, wonderful, I'm glad to share it tonight. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes to talk to you about that.
Thanks, Tammy.
Excellent work, excellent work, Tammy, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so now after that good news, we'll move on to item eight. Uh, and I will move that the council accept an application from Robert Treza, doing business as TRS Construction, for permission to close one lane of traffic in the vicinity of one Wellsville Avenue on November thirtieth, next Monday, through December fourth. Uh, rain dates would be December seventh through the eleventh to repair the roof on a home at one Wellsville Avenue. And this would be done between the hours of seven AM and five PM. And it is, uh, pending the approval from the Traffic Authority.
And this has already been, thank you, Walter. And this has already, uh, gone through with their approval of our DPW Director, Jack Healy, and then the Milford, uh, Police Department Chief, Chief Sarudo. So they're both aware of that and have been in contact with TR Construction. So we have a first and a second, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item nine, uh, we have an update from our Finance Director, Greg Ospow.
Greg could not make it tonight, so he gave me, uh, uh, an update, so I'll give it to you. If any questions, please, uh, email Greg or the mayor's office, we'll make sure and get it to him. So according to Greg, the audit is wrapping up and all indications point to another successful year with a clean audit and a surplus has come in just as was predicted back in June. It has been a seamless process. The budget process is about to begin, and the file, which is in munis, has been created for department entry. Uh, for this year expenditures and revenues, expenditures on a cash basis are at forty-five point four percent of budget. On a straight line basis, they are expected to be at thirty-four point six. Police overtime is at thirty point three percent of budget and are not a concern at this point. Other legal expenses trending a little above the average at forty-six point eight percent of budget and bears watching. Most salaries are within the thirty-four points to expect, expected straight line expenditure pattern. Revenues are at fifty-one point one percent of budget. Taxes overall are at fifty-five point six percent of budget with current taxes at fifty-six point two. Interest income remains an ongoing concern, as it is unlikely we will make the budget in that area. Aging Youth Agency and Parks and Rec revenues are currently lagging behind the trend due to ongoing COVID-nineteen concerns. We re- we received our first installment of the ECS grant, and it is what was expected. All ever re- all ever revenues are at or above target at this point. I am pleased to report that currently there are no major budgetary concerns other than interest income. Overall, on a cash base, on a cash basis, expenditures total thirty-four million, one hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents, and revenues total fifty-two million, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars, nine hundred and sixty-three thousand, four hundred and three dollars and seventy-eight cents, leaving the town with a positive cash flow of eighteen million, eight hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty cents. And that was, uh, Greg's report.
Good job, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, item ten is an update from Economic Development, Karen Pollard. Karen, oh, there you are. Karen?
Me now?
Hello?
Hello? Let me get to adjourn. Well, let's, let's give it another second. Karen?
Uh, Mike, is she, uh, able to?
She is unmuted.
Yep, she's unmuted.
Okay.
Uh, if you'd like, I could probably start her video, and maybe she can sign with us for a second to make sure she's got something going.
Okay.
Signing is good, yeah, I like that.
Maybe we can diagnose a troubleshoot for just a second.
Thank you, Mike.
I've been there.
Perhaps she just stepped away.
She must have stepped away because she's not accepting the invite to unmute, to, um, start her video.
Okay, well, uh, I'll jump in for just a second, the...
We're making you work hard tonight, Mayor.
The, um, the town, we started a, uh, Ultimate New Milford. So basically, what that is, is Milford businesses, uh, can, uh, give a gift card. And then what happens within that gift card, there's a daily drawing for the gift card. Uh, I believe it's been very successful so far. I think we've had our first, um, recipient of the gift card. And it's all about trying to create additional, uh, awareness of the different businesses, uh, throughout New Milford. And also, uh, kind of bring, uh, kind of new, uh, I don't want to say urgency, but a new kind of, uh, panache, so to speak, for this type of event. They've happened in other, uh, areas, uh, and other towns and cities, and they've been quite successful. And so far, uh, with the town's, uh, you know, first, uh, beginnings, uh, seems to be very successful so far. Um, also, uh, as Governor Lamont has done, he's rolled back, uh, going from phase three, as we all know, to two point one. Uh, what that has done has, uh, if we're gonna go to the restaurant industry, it's reduced capacity uh, down to twenty-five percent inside. Uh, does allow for, uh, outside dining, but as we all know, with the, uh, cold weather coming, that's going to be a hurdle for a lot of these restaurants as the state fire marshal is not allowing any kind of, uh, heat sources, whether they be burners or, uh, whatever, for those that, uh, businesses that had canopies or tents, uh, to try and, uh, uh, create more of an ability for outside dining. Uh, you'll be noticing, uh, within the next few days, we're gonna be taking those up off of Railroad Street as the merchants have asked for that, for that already, as they're seeing, uh, a reduction in use of, uh, those outside dining areas. Uh, but we are asking our residents, we continue to push out, uh, if you can, if you feel uncomfortable about eating inside. Uh, there's also takeout, curbside delivery, uh, and also you can buy a gift card. Uh, we also say the same thing for retail establishments, uh, asking our residents, especially this Christmas, to buy local. Uh, we have a lot of unique shops and stores here in New Milford. Uh, you get a wonderful, unique gift, uh, for your loved one or one that you're buying for, and that obviously helps our small, local businesses. And they're the ones, as we all know here, they're the ones that, when we need a donation for a sports team or we need a donation for, uh, helping out someone within the community. They're the first ones we call on, they're the ones that always give us those donations. So if we could really help them in need this time, that would really be, uh, a wonderful thing for us to all to do as a community.
Yeah, you're here.
Uh, also, we continue to, uh, talk to our, uh, bigger, um, uh, companies, uh, see if what their needs are, what they're seeing so far. Uh, a lot of them, uh, are kind of in the same boat where they're, uh, some of them are just, uh, are kind of flat out uh, producing things like Kimberly Clark is right now, uh, due to, uh, the demand. Um, and what they're looking for is additional workers, uh, those trained workers. And that kind of dovetails in with our continued work with Kathy Awad and Northwestern Investment Board. And they're the ones that help us with, uh, uh, job mentoring. Uh, uh, also Tammy, uh, got the grant from them last year concerning bringing on youth to work within our, uh, Park and Rec Departments and through our Youth Agency. And, uh, like Tammy and our departments did such a great job that, uh, Investment Board has offered this for us to be able to do year-round. So we're working on developing that, uh, that's really gonna help those, uh, youngsters. Uh, this is kind of an income-driven-based, uh, uh, opportunity, give those a kind of a first-time job, uh, an opportunity to earn some income for themselves. Uh, they can buy whatever they want, presents or whatever for their family, and it's just a great thing to see. Uh, we've also partnered with them on a mentoring, uh, business as well, where they can go into a specific business, learn the business, uh, also help and partner with payroll with the, uh, with the, with the employer. Uh, and then once that person, uh, is done and goes through the successful mentoring program, that business now has a full-fledged worker, it's already been trained. So we're working on that. There's a couple of, uh, businesses that we're gonna be working with the Investment Board on that as well. So we're very excited about that partnership, uh, too. We also see some new businesses coming into Mil- New Milford. Uh, BD Provisions, which will be on Main Street, uh, I believe in December, they're gonna be opening up, uh, al- already with a lot of fanfare. They have another location in Newtown that's very well-received. We have a lot of New Milford residents that partake of that and are very excited for them to, uh, come to New Milford. Uh, on Bank Street, we have the, uh, um, the juice, uh, the juice business there. I've been there a couple of times, uh, do a real good thing. They also have fruit bowls there as well. Uh, when you go, uh, uh, up to Litchfield Crossings, uh, you're gonna have Jersey Mikes there. You're also going to, uh, have Chipolis. And, uh, those buildings are still moving, uh, are moving forward. I was talking to our Building Department, and they continue to get additional permits as they continue to, uh, build out their, uh, their, their businesses there. Uh, we also have on, uh, Route seven north, uh, of Big Y and north of the brewery. Go a little farther, you have the seed warehouse. Uh, I think they did a beautiful job with that location, too, and that's a national distributor. They also do everything from regular seeds to, uh, seeds that need to be frozen. Uh, so it was great that they chose New Milford, uh, to, uh, uh, put their business in. Up on, uh, two oh two, uh, up where the old Dodge, uh, dealership used to be, uh, there. Uh, Mr. Lee is moving forward with his pharmacy and with a, uh, specialty, uh, store there as well. So we'll have more information on that as those things are moving forward. Uh, so it's great to see these new investments come into town, and, uh, we'll be updating the, uh, council with more of those as we move along. Does anybody have any questions?
Mayor, excellent job, Mayor, once again, finance man and economic development. Uh, could you ask Karen if she could email us her full report? I got, I mean, I like everything you said, I just would like to see whatever she might have said. Thanks.
Any other questions?
Mister Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would like to wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving and a tradition on my part. A motion to adjourn.
Thanksgiving, everyone.
Do we have a second?
I second that. Yep.
Okay, and happy Thanksgiving to everybody, all those in favor of Walter's motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, everybody.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Have a happy Thanksgiving.
You too.
Happy Thanksgiving.